Good evening, everyone. My name is Laura Schifrin and I'm chairman of the planning board and calling this meeting to order on August 22, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Roll call vote, please. Carol Hawes is present.
Ian Ortiz is present.
Mike Brost is present.
And Laura Schifrin present. Please raise for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all and thank you to our veterans, past, present, and those serving to protect us. This meeting is being recorded. 1.4 Chairman's additions, deletions to agenda unforeseen prior to 48 hours of this meeting. I do not have anyone or anything to add or delete. 1.5 Review volunteer response forms received for planning board vacancy. We have not received any. 2 Public hearing starts at 6:45, so we have some time. Can we go right to 3 work session? And try to get some stuff done. How's that? Um, well, 3.1 is planning board members sign the Townsend master plan and we do have that here. And Carol and I have signed. So if the other members could make sure that they come in to sign that.
Yes, I already talked to Beth. I'll be there tomorrow morning.
Okay, very good. Michael, can you stop by?
Yeah.
Thank you. And we haven't heard from Robert yet. Okay, so let's get before us the 3.2 Age Restricted Development Bylaw Amendment directed by Town Council. I don't have it though. It should be in the package that you have done anything. It was like 3.2. What's the year of what it's viable? Okay, so 3.2. Is this bottom note? After he wrote this, he wrote that, yeah. But he sent after your meeting. Right, so we also emailed. So let me just read the article that was drafted. Zoning by law amendment age restricted development. To see if the town will vote to amend its zoning bylaw being chapter 145 of the town code article nine entitled special provisions, section 54.1 entitled age restricted development as follows. One, by striking from subsection C entitled basic requirements, item five in its entirety. Two, by striking from said subsection C, the following sentence in item seven. A pertinent conservation restriction running to or enforceable by the town shall be recorded for the common open space area and shall include restrictions that the land may be retained in perpetuity for conservation or passive recreation. This is being recommended to remove entirely from the, I think we had some discussion on this, how it didn't make, it was overly restrictive of something that might not even apply. Right? Um, three, by renumbering items six, seven, and eight. Instead subsection C as items five, six, and seven respectively, following the elimination of existing item five as aforementioned. Understandable. Uh, four, by thereafter adding to said subsection C, a new item to be numbered eight. Stating as follows, the planning board may in its reasonable discretion reduce, alter, or waive any or all of the foregoing basic requirements upon demonstration by an applicant of just cause for such a reduction, alteration, or waiver. I believe that's what we wanted. Okay, so. Um, another side comment. I note that the waiver provision I've drafted while more comprehensive than what exists as section C5 today would still authorize waivers only of the preceding basic requirements in section C. In other words, the planning board would not be authorized to waive the requirements of section D, age appropriate design, or E development standards. If you wish to give it such authority, we would need to further adjust the language I've now proposed and to relocate the waiver provision outside of section C. Let me know. Ness from council.
I'm going to send this email. Do you want me to read that? Yeah, okay. So this is the email sent to Chairman Schifrin and Chad who attended the meeting. Um, it says, see attached warrant article, which is read for adjustments to the age restricted development bylaw. Following up on our discussion on Tuesday. I opted to draft it as a single article. It made sense because of the need to restructure all of subsection C. However, I can still divide it into separate articles if the planning board thinks it best. And parentheses, it actually may be more confusing that way. I'm confused. Also see my annotation regarding scope of the waiver provision. Which was that? And let me know if there are questions for town council.
Yeah, comments from the board?
I got none.
Okay, and Carol has none. Mike?
Yeah, so I'm gonna keep reading.
Okay, um. I'm inclined to go with his recommendation. And I think too that if if he thinks it's going to be confusing to separate it, I can't even imagine what would happen. You know? Um. If somebody had, no, this is a change to zoning bylaw, so we would have a public hearing on this anyway. So discussion could take place during that time. So is everyone okay with us going ahead with this for a 2022 special town meeting? To propose as a warrant article, right? Your motion? Oh, um, okay, to move forward with.
I'll hear you.
Okay, Mike makes a motion to move forward with the zoning bylaw amendment, age restricted development. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
No, I haven't had a discussion.
Hearing none, I'll take a roll call vote, please. Carol Hawes is, yes.
Ian Ortiz is.
Mike?
Mike Brost is.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you. Why don't we, can we do that at the end of this meeting? Let's do it. As far as Beth is asking when we should schedule public hearing. And I'd like to get through tonight's agenda and we can see where we are then. Okay? Um, maybe another five minutes. Oh, yeah, do we have the, we can do this quickly, I think. Discuss proposed edits and or changes to BOS policy number 1-2021, meeting decorum policy.
Yeah, sure. I also heard of that. We have Reagan joining the meeting and she is.
Is she on the agenda?
No, but she's there because she wrote the report for the Lockbrook Solar Array, the annual landscape monitoring.
And that's 4.1?
Yeah.
Um, Reagan's? Is that how you pronounce her name? Reagan? Uh, your hand is up. Hi.
How are you? Sorry, I wasn't quite prepared yet. Good, how are you?
I wanted to see if you wanted to just discuss your 4.1 here, the correspondence that you sent on the solar array so that you don't have to stay for the whole meeting because we have the public hearing at 6:45. And we have no idea.
Sure, I appreciate you.
Okay.
Yep, okay. Hi.
All right, you're 4.1 on here. Okay, 22 West Meadow Road Annual Landscape Monitoring.
Yes, so thank you. My name is Reagan Andriola with Beals and Thomas. I'm a registered landscape architect and we have worked with the applicant and owner of the Lockbrook Solar site. And one of the conditions of the permit was to do annual monitoring of the landscaping out there. Um, we have had, you know, we started it last year and there were some issues with the, some of the plants being, um, you know, I think inadvertently maybe mowed down by the owner who is still actively farming the site. Um, and so this year we've gone out and reviewed the landscaping again and um, the trees do look fairly good. Um, actually surprising given this season in the drought that they actually, um, you know, all the, it seems like all the, the majority of the trees have survived and are actually somewhat thriving. Um, the, there are some shrubs that are smaller and right, are right along the existing vegetated buffer all, um, and along West Meadow that are small. They're still probably smaller than the existing vegetation out there so that this time those aren't providing any um, screening value, but they are providing some habitat value, which is good. Um, and so the trees that are out there now, like I said, they're, um, they are growing, they are continuing to thrive. Um, there were a few that I did out of the total number that were originally planted last year. There were a few that were, I think I had written in the memo, uh, four that, um, I did not count. Um, so I think 18 out of 22 trees, if I'm remembering correctly. Um, so, you know, pretty good survivability so far, I would say, again, during this kind of um, unprecedented dry season. So, um, you know, you can see kind of my observations in the report, but I guess it would be, it's really up to the planning board's discretion how, you know, how we move forward. Um, you know, we do have, I think that permit had five years of monitoring, so we still have three more years of monitoring on this. Um, I mean, it would probably be my recommendation that we just kind of wait and see, you know, do it next year and hopefully we get some more rain even after today. There's, you know, hopefully this week things will start to, um, we'll get a little bit more precipitation and that'll help those plants out even more. And I'd say maybe in another year or two. Again, that's, this is my recommendation that, um, then we can evaluate and see if any additional plantings need to be added. Um, you know, obviously in the setting, there really aren't any other neighbors around. Um, so I wouldn't say that the view would be offensive, um, to anyone. So, um, you know, clearly it will be a while before significant screening, um, or, you know, um, obscuring of the view of the, the array will happen with this landscaping, but I think for now it's, it's doing pretty well. Um, again, given the conditions, so. Happy to hear what the, you know, what you guys in town actually, you know, people who drive by, well, how you feel about it. Um, but pretty simple.
I think your report was very comprehensive and I appreciate the photos that you attached to it. Um, because not everybody gets to go by it all the time, so. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'm inclined to agree. I think we are too, to agree with your recommendation. And, um, we'll just um, wait for next year's report unless something really detrimental happens, you know, somebody notices something out of the ordinary before that time. Mike, your hand is up.
Oh, it's actually not.
It's not? Oh, that's the most, sorry about that.
Don't worry.
Do we need a motion? Let us, you might plan to accept the report.
Okay, I'll undertake a motion to accept the report. I'll make a motion to accept, to accept the report from Beals and Thomas on the Lockbrook Solar Array on 22 West Meadow Road. Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'd like a roll call vote, please. Carol Hawes is, yes.
Ian Ortiz is.
Mike Brost is.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you so much, Reagan. Have a good evening.
Okay, thank you. You too. Thanks for taking this early and we'll see you next year, if not before, hopefully not. All right, thanks. Bye.
Okay, I think we are at 6:45. I'd like a motion, please, to open the public hearing for 22 Main Street Site Plan Review Special Permit, August 22, 2022 at 6:45. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. There is a second. Uh, introduce the board members, or I'll have you introduce yourselves actually with a roll call vote, please.
Robert Theriault.
Carol Hawes. Ian?
Ian Ortiz.
Michael?
Mike Brost.
And Laura Schifrin. Is there a assignment sheet for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay. So that'll be circulated for anyone that is here. And I will read the public notice. In accordance with Mass General Law Chapter 48 Townsend Zoning Bylaw 145-42 Site Plan Review Special Permit 145-33, 145-40, and 145-65. In the rules and code of the town of Townsend, the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Monday, August 22, 2022 at 6:45 PM in the selectmen's chambers at Memorial Hall 272 Main Street. The applicant Sally Thurgood is proposing alterations to a structured driveway configuration and addition of parking spaces at 22 Main Street. Map 41 Block 6 Lot 0, zoned OCD outlining commercial business. To operate a veterinary hospital, alternate access to the meeting is via the following Zoom link. I'm not going to read it. Parties wishing to speak in support of or in opposition to this application may do so at the hearing or in writing prior to the hearing. Copies of this application are available for review at town hall during business hours respectfully submitted. Laura Schifrin, Chairman. Published in the Sentinel Enterprise, August 5 and August 12, 2022. A butters have all been noticed as well as the various departments at town hall. Okay. Um, Mr. Exer, you now have 10 to 15 minutes to present your proposal.
So I believe tonight's hearing is about parking situation.
Uh, Site Plan Review for is stated in the notice, I believe. Proposing alterations to structured driveway configuration and additional parking, which is the site.
So I have a drawing to scale that I did myself, um, using. Same, but I changed it a little bit because I saw in the bylaws that you um, require one parking space per 180 square feet of floor space in the building. So that came out to six parking places. Um, the parking area is going to be in back of the building. And there's plenty of room. There's nature in a quarter, so there's plenty of room for parking.
Yeah, but now that one is different. You changed your site plan?
It's the same site plan, but I added a parking space to the parking area that is already there. That's all I did because I did the calculations and that's what you asked for.
So, um, Robert, I'm going to have you take this and put it into the record as exhibit A. We just want to mark the top of it, exhibit A, sorry, and sign your name under it as a clerk.
I'm sorry, what?
You're going to enter that into the record as exhibit A.
Okay.
Thank you. Because we, we have a revision of, uh, her application. And so you just sign your name under that. Thank you.
Are the parking spaces going over the subject system?
Yes.
And the shed has been moved. Is this the? Would this be this one scale? As this, this is covered in that, that she does, you know, that's the board of health. Oh, they're the ones that submitted this?
This is from the board of health. When they returned their comments, that's what they included. So that is not her application. With the response. So the scale is the same, origin is the same. She did add that the parking spot, as she said. Actually, there's an additional comments on here?
Comments?
Yeah, you, you made additional comments on, on the.
I wanted to point out that um, the curb cut according to the bylaws can't be more than 24 feet wide. So I wanted to point out that it's not going to be any more than 24 feet wide. And as it goes between the lot line and the west side of the building, it's going to be about 20 feet, I believe, maybe or less. But it won't. It, it's all going to be compliant with bylaws. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, that's great, Peter. That is it, that's the entire application.
Yeah, this is the new one.
Oh.
Where is the list that I would have?
It's like a little here. I did some scratching, it's been built through it. You also have a, a request for a waiver, um, at some point.
Um, so, okay. What I have on here for the zoning bylaw thing says, Site Plan Review Special Permit, conversion from a single family residence to a veterinary hospital.
Yeah, that's the project. It was pretty feasible, but it's a little.
Right? And two. Construction and, I'm trying. Yeah, construction and improvement in systems of vehicular and pedestrian access drainage with supply storage under our bylaws. And protection and public health and safety, welfare, property, the environment. These are considerations. That doesn't mean the applicant just fulfills all this.
Correct. It just means that they are, they're eligible to apply for the permit, which she did.
All right. Um. Two. Special permit is required. And it is a special permit being required only because of the additional parking spaces?
Yeah, and after change in use.
And I know it's.
The change in use requiring by them the parking spaces make the eligible for site.
Is it, is it two separate? Is it, is it two separate issues? Is the change of use separate from the additional parking spaces? You know, that's the reason for the additional parking spaces. Because of the change in use from a single-family residence to a. And that's what Travers said. So. And again, I'm trying to go by what you have, so it's not completed. Right, that's gonna be in the referral comments. I will add my notes, my notes. I'm going to the application. That's probably not. You have a board number, there's one of those who on their own. Please tell me what you're, what is in the application. The board that's been signing. Okay, why don't we go to, does anybody have any direct questions right now? We may. Hi, Adam. Welcome.
How are you, Madam Chair?
I just noticed that you were here. Thank you for coming.
I've been here.
You have been here?
I have.
Were you here since we started at six forty-five on the hearing?
Uh, yes, and since you called this hearing, I have been.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Uh, yes, you want me to?
Sure.
Right. First of all, um. Ms. Herbert, can you tell us how many square feet in the building now?
Um. The clinic is on the first floor and it's one thousand and fifty square feet.
On the first floor is one fifty?
Yeah.
There are several things here that have come to our attention. And. Room. One nineteen is a state highway. So it has to have a state driveway. We have to have state highway approval. And so that would be a requirement here. That would have to be addressed.
Even though there is a driveway there now.
It's, it's, you're changing the driveway. Um, and it is a new curb cut. By understanding. That. The general policy, now, don't quote me on this, but. It has in the past been. The driveways have to be. Uh, greater than a hundred feet of any adjacent driveway.
One hundred feet for what?
I'm not, I'm not sure of the specific requirements that Mass Department. Of Transportation has, but on state highways, every curb opening. Or access point in the highway has to be a certain distance from an adjacent one. So we don't have any information here on that. And whether that would comply or not. So I think that's, uh.
So aside from the town bylaws, this is a state?
Yes, because you're entering a state load, yes. And, um. Um, what's the status of the, the parking that you're showing here? Appears to be going over. Where the septic system is either now or is been installed or is going to be installed. We're not. Up to speed on. The status of that.
It was done in June.
All right, the Health Department says it hasn't been certified yet.
He, well, he went there to inspect it.
Well, it would have to be certified. Plus, um. The design of that septic system would have to accommodate vehicles the way you're planning to park over them.
Yeah.
So we don't have any confirmation that's happened.
Yes, I do.
We do?
From the board of health.
Well, I'm not in writing, but that's what I paid for. That's what I got.
Who knows, we'll see if we can figure that out. Um, you know what I think? Yeah, could we go to, if you don't mind, could we go to the referral comments and Beth is gonna read them to us first?
Say those first.
Okay.
I was just gonna say that, Lori, because there's a lot of stuff in the referrals I think that are gonna come up in the.
Yeah, so let's just have those read into the record.
All right, thank you.
Okay. I think the people who see that staff and the comments that we received, and I have a copy for you. On your application that you submitted. Um, it was circulated to staff, boards, committees. And the Board of Health returned the following comment. We trust the planning board and building department to resolve any outstanding fines or violation. The Board of Selectmen supports the use of this property for the proposed purpose in the outlined commercial district. The Board of Health responded with this comment. Number one, as required by the towns and Board of Health, the applicant recently installed a two-compartment fifteen-hundred-gallon septic tank. To comply with the requirements of three-ten CMR fifteen. The tank install never received a certificate of compliance because the installer. Has not yet submitted his ad-built form and certification. This is dated August third. The septic tank and leach field are in the same general location as a proposed parking area. The septic tank is H two O and designed for vehicle loading. But the leach area is not designed for vehicle traffic or to have impervious surfaces placed over it. The parking area must be sited in an area that is not over the leaching area. See attached diagram for system location. Please let me know if you have any questions. I'm here attached, but that isn't. I'll talk to you. Um. The zoning Board of Appeal offers the following comment. We support the business in Townsend. This looks good. The Building Commissioner offers the following comment. The only concern I have at this point are parking and the fines of theft to the owner slash applicant. Before the site plan review was applied for. There are eighteen hundred dollars in outstanding fines issued. The town doesn't have a mechanism for collecting fees. I feel our best course of action is to condition site plan review. To include paying the outstanding fees. The town used considerable resources and time to convey what would be required to bring this property into legal compliance. I feel that the board should make review of the site plan a condition no sooner than six months in order to give the applicant. Time to make payments as well as reviewing any other conditions that are imposed. As far as parking, there are two bylaws that concern me. One is section one forty-five thirty-three C of section three, which states. Parking areas with five or more spaces shall be designated and located. So that their use does not involve vehicles backing onto a public way. The other is section one forty-five thirty-three. Section C, number five, which states, in no part, in part, I'm sorry. Quote, no part of any private parking area having five or more spaces shall be located within a required front yard, unquote. It will be up to the planning board to decide if either of these conditions can be met. With the change in use, it is a business slash professional office. The Townsend bylaw requires a minimum of five spaces for one thousand square feet of floor space. Um, he will be unavailable for the hearing and he will be on vacation outside of the country, and that was the building commissioner. This is from the Highway Department. Um, and this, you know, the comments are, that follows. This location, in parentheses, Route one nineteen, in parentheses, falls under the direction of Mass DOT. Change in use permit. The resident is required to file permits with Mass DOT. Please refer to, and he cites the website for you. The resident would need to request an account with shapes. Um, after the account is approved, a new permit application is to be completed. An engineered site plan may be required. Refer to seven hundred CMR thirteen and Mass DOT for more information. The Water Department offered the following comment. Um, would like to discuss the water needs. The house only has a three-quarter inch water line. Is that enough for the business needs? Question mark. Land Use Coordinator offers the following comment. The site has zoning appropriate to this use, but I would want to ensure the project has adequate parking, proper driveway width. Observe setback requirements and have adequate entrances and exits onto Main Street. The current drawing is difficult to gauge scale. In particular, for the proposed parking or the amount of paved area for driveway. It appears there is a large area behind the house to be paved, but it is unclear in the drawing. The project will also need to submit a stormwater application as required by general bylaw. Two, chapter eighty-five, NFT space two stormwater management. And regulation one seventy-five dash forty-four, Stormwater Management Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan. The Stormwater Plan. It will likely fall under the minor project category, but I cannot determine that until I know the square footage of the ground disturbance. For the project. The stormwater application needs to be submitted and approved prior to any construction. And the police chief returned no comment. And that's all. Thank you, Beth. I have a copy of these for you. Now, having had the. Department's comments, referrals, read into the record. Questions?
We got any, but we, we don't have anything from the fire chief on this.
Uh, the fire chief returned no comment in the email, sorry. So there was no comment from the fire.
When I look at the site plan you prepared here. You show a twenty-four foot wide driveway. And you're stating that's the scale. Um, if that's true, then it would imply the removal and alteration of the building.
Removal of the building?
Well, if your scale is adequate.
I'm sorry?
Your drawing that you submitted.
Yes.
Along the right property line. You indicate a twenty-four foot wide driveway.
No, I did not. The twenty-four feet is the distance from the west side of the building to the. Property line.
That's not the driveway?
That's not the driveway, but the driveway will be in there. That's why I made the comment over here that the driveway, um. At the. At the highway, the curb cut can be twenty to twenty-four feet. I'm looking at the businesses next door on either side. And I assume that they follow code and that will probably be similar, a similar.
So.
Driveway that I will put in. And so what my comment is, is that at the street entrance. The driveway can be twenty to twenty-four feet wide, the curb cut. And then twenty feet wide, um. Farther in from the side of the building towards the lot line because I think you need some space there, don't you?
Between the property line and the driveway?
I would have, I couldn't find it in the bylaws, but I sort of.
So.
Figured we wouldn't need it.
So this is. Um, so. What I think you're indicating to me or trying to indicate here is that the distance from the property line to the existing building is twenty-four feet.
It's twenty-four feet from the building to the property lawn.
Okay, who determined that? You did?
I went out there and I measured it.
Okay. Um, so, and then, um, we're. Proposing a twenty to twenty-four foot driveway.
Well.
A curb cut anyway, right? At the front.
Curb cut.
Right, okay. So that's going to narrow to something less than twenty-four feet.
It could. I don't know if I'm allowed to have twenty-four feet driveway.
Right, uh, well. Um, I, I don't think, there's a minimum distance on a driveway, but not a maximum as far as a term driveway goes. However, the curb cut is pretty specific. So the zoning bylaw refers to that curb cut open.
Okay.
Um, and that should be a product of. The number of vehicles that are gonna be housed on the site. So you're showing, so, uh, what I'm saying is. This drawing here isn't comprehensive enough. For us to really evaluate a lot of these topics. Um, and other questions that I have is, um, you indicated. Six parking spaces. And that's premised upon the square footage or the zoning bylaw or what standard?
I read the bylaw.
Yes.
And it said. That for my type of business, you want one parking space per one hundred and eighty square feet of floor space in the business.
Right.
That came up to six parking spaces.
Okay, so is that include staff and employees or not?
Um, it could.
Um, well. You currently operating your business there now, right?
Operating what?
You're operating your business here.
I am, yes.
How many patrons a day are you getting?
I don't know, ten?
Ten. Um. Well, I just, I think we're just trying to find out more about the project here. Um. I, um. It appears to me. That. Um. I, I think there's insignificant amount of information on the site plan. We have. Reduced from other people. Referencing more specific information. Um. And this has a engineer's stamp of what I think is really the mortgage inspection plan. Um, it has nothing to do with what's being proposed on this drawing. Um, and so, and there's no. Topographical information on this site plan to indicate. The topography and to get a perception on how much drainage, uh. Would be required. And again, more information on the type of material. That's gonna be used for the parking surfaces and driveway surface. I, I assume it might be asphalt.
It says in the bylaws it needs to be paved. And so that's what we're gonna do.
Right, so that impacts drainage. That impacts, um. So there's many.
Uh, so somebody has to define pavement for me.
Well, pavement is a generic word, okay? There are many products that can be used in paving a surface. So. Some of those products. Are more desirable to out, to others in terms of the environment and in terms of what the owners' needs are. So having an understanding of what that will be is gonna be important and it helps determine. The merit of any site drainage issues or not. So in other words, you can have a hard paved material that's impervious and doesn't implicate or impact. Or reduces the significance of any drainage on the site. Okay, so. Okay, so what I'm trying to say is that. One decision impacts another and. So without. Having information on what you're proposing to do. We. Cannot, in other words, if you're proposing to put. Asphalt down, which is typical.
No.
Okay, so. Then we need to know what are the material that is and how that would impact the drainage on the site and. And if there's any other peripheral concerns and. So none of this information has been made available so that we can.
I can make that at all.
Okay, so what I'm trying to say is this has to be upgraded. In a. A higher standard here. So that this committee can look at situations and say. That's acceptable, it's not acceptable, it's tolerable, or it can be modified and we can make an accommodation for you. Okay, but right now there's nothing to look at. For us to make a determination in terms of either helping you or processing this on.
Good. Robert, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Now, I think this is probably the appropriate time for me to ask. Or read. Your waiver request because a lot of the questions that are coming up. Are because we don't have the site plan, the engineered site plan.
This is what I was told to bring. This is what I was told to bring.
Well, that's, that's not.
I know this is the final plan.
Okay. So.
So I just need to find out from you people. What can I, what can I do to make this better? I am not going to pay nine thousand to an engineer. Because I've already done that for the other place. And I, and I'm just not. I'll do the plan myself. I have plenty of math in my background. I can do a plan.
Hey Lori, Lori, can I? I think you should read the waiver and direct the, uh, the request that she's making into record before we continue the conversation.
Yes.
Yeah, before we continue, I say read that, then we get, we get further discussion.
Okay. Let me just. Prefix this with that I have. What the town uses for a site plan review for a special permit. And it's very specific. It's pages long, it has by the bylaws to refer to in it. And it's our job to make sure that every question on this site plan review gets answered. In a letter dated January, July eighteenth twenty-two to the planning board. It basically states, I respectfully request that instead of an engineer prepared site plan, that I be able to draw the site plan to scale. In keeping with current commercial building codes. My intention is to place a parking lot in the back of the building with the driveway that runs from Route one nineteen where the. Present curb cut is along the west side of the building. There will be five parking spaces, which is nine six. And the present driveway widened to be able to accommodate cars entering and leaving. The front of the lot will be green space. So this is your request. For wa, it doesn't say those words, but this is your request for a waiver to an engineer prepared site plan. Is that correct, Mr. Verber?
I requested that I could draw the plan myself.
Pleasure of the board?
Oh, well. I, I, that's, I, I can't personally grant that request to you. That this, these are. These have to be done to professional standards. You don't have the credentials to be doing them. And the information. Even you trying to do this self. May not benefits you, benefit you. And could end up taking longer to execute as we keep coming back and forth with more questions on the site plan. Whereas a professional person would already be aware of what this planning board would be looking for. And could refer to our guidelines for that. And prepare a document that meant them. So. And in this regard. You are modifying the site. It'd be a different scenario. That there was no alterations to the site or you were just replacing a subject tank.
Okay.
Hey Lori, can I?
Yes, Mike, I just saw your hand.
All right, thank you. So yeah, I just, you know, working everything over. I have a lot of concern just because there's so many unknowns that I think tonight the really point of, uh, of Mr. Verber coming here tonight is. To get to see if you can do get the waiver or not. I have a lot of concern just because there's not a lot of specific information on here that would help us. You know, determine that and, and you know. The, the drawing, there's no survey, that there's a, there's a lot missing unfortunately. As much as I, I would love to try to help a local business expedite processes, I also think. That it could save her a lot more headaches down the line, you know, and potentially money down the line by getting a professional engineer involved. Just because there's a lot of things that might be overlooked.
Okay, Carol, I just have one comment. You made a comment about your words sure about this, you know, the driveway sidelines.
Well, it's not in the bylaws, so I didn't know exactly what.
I was going to tell you, but it's one forty-five dash thirty-three. Paragraph C, C four B. And it says all driveways serving five or more parking spaces shall be constructed with a minimum edge radius of five feet on both sides.
Five feet on both sides? Of green space or tape space?
It says.
Edge space.
It just says all.
The edge.
Edge space.
Edge space.
What edge?
Well, the distance from the edge of the driveway to. Any, any, anything else.
Just says five feet on either side?
Yes.
Okay.
It says, but it's, it's by law one forty-five dash thirty-three paragraph C. Four B. And it's probably about, about in the middle of.
Four.
It's C, paragraph C.
B.
Four B.
I didn't even see that.
So in considering that. That requirement. The actual driver reduced to somewhere around fourteen feet according to your drawing.
Twenty-four minus ten is fourteen, so is that wide enough?
And it's worse if it's you twenty by.
Pardon?
Well. A fourteen foot wide, wide driveway. Is not wide enough for two cars to pass one another, but it's wide enough for its driveway.
Okay.
All right.
Is that okay?
Again, we'd have to see how that works in the site plan. To determine that.
I'm told that you were given what we need. The site plan review for special permit, all the questions that we need to decipher the answers to and that you must comply with. Having heard the comments now, the referral comments in particular from the Board of Health and the Building Inspector. Do you want to? Continue the hearing until you can submit us more information?
Yes.
I think that's probably the best way to go right now.
I'd agree with that, Lori.
Adam, do you have any comments? Are we within our purview?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Certainly you are. I mean, I think it's important to recognize that. The zoning bylaw in Townsend provides very explicitly. The, the process and procedure. And the substantive standards for what you call a site plan special permit. And to the applicant's credit, Ms. Thurber seems to be generally familiar with what it says, and she's made. Appropriate requests, for example. For waivers of some of those requirements and the bylaw gives her the right to request those waivers. But those waivers can be granted or denied in the board's discretion. Based upon the information that it believes it needs to apply the standard. So the bylaw talks about. Coordinating systems of vehicular and pedestrian access. It talks about. Drainage and water supply and sewage disposal and. Lighting and landscaping and buildings. And protecting the public health, safety, welfare, environment. Through the appropriate design of these various features. So. The extent to which the board needs information and how much information it needs is going to differ project to project. Site to site. Based upon existing conditions and based upon what a, what an applicant, what a proponent is proposing to do. So I think you've given some, some substantive feedback tonight. I think you need to be as specific as you can. I appreciate that. The planning board has received various letters or emails from different departments and different. Other boards and commissions and committees. Raising their potential concerns, but just because they've raised these concerns. Doesn't mean they're concerns of the board. Very often. Some of these concerns might be outside the board's purview. They may be things that are not terribly concerning to a planning board member. So. I think what's important is that you send Ms. Thurber away with an understanding of what you need. If you're not going to grant a waiver of the requirement in the bylaw that there be an engineered site plan. She needs to know that. You have no obligation to, to grant that waiver, but if she comes back without an engineered site plan and you're not prepared to grant the waiver. You're going to deny the special permit and she will, her certificate of occupancy will be revoked and she'll be required to vacate the facility. Conversely, if you're okay allowing her to draft something that is maybe more substantive than what you currently have. But maybe is not an engineered site plan with an engineer stamp on it. She needs to know that too. So the more information you can give her as she departs tonight, I appreciate that she's willing to continue. I think that based upon what I've heard over the past. Forty-five minutes, a continuance is probably the only answer here because the board needs more information. But Ms. Thurber needs to know exactly what the board is expecting of her. So that we don't spin our wheels again when she's back in two weeks or four weeks or whenever it is that you choose to continue to.
Thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
Sure.
Madam Chairman?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion to continue then?
Well, not without giving her specifics.
Oh.
I, I'd like a list of things to prepare for the next meeting. So I'm going to get the state DOT permit.
Well, they, you can't get that without the site plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Why don't we deal with?
I didn't have a site plan before and I got one.
I'm sorry?
I didn't have a site plan before. For the other property. And I got a. Permit from the state to do a curb cut, another curb cut.
Well, if you can do it without, that's. Great.
So I'll call them, they can do, they can tell me.
Well, they have their own requirements.
Yeah, that's, that's not up to us. But. I did read into the record her request for. A waiver of an engineered site plan. And. Why don't we have a motion for that first? And. Either voted up or down. And depending on how that goes. Give instruction. To her for what we would need at the next meeting. Because there won't be any other vote tonight. We can't grant the special permit. We can't fill. We can't answer the questions that we are obligated to answer.
Yeah, hey Lori, so, so how, how this, I'll make a motion. I'll make.
It has to be in the affirmative.
Yeah, that's why I was, that's why I'm trying to word it right now because I know it's going to be in the affirmative. I'll be a motion to approve. The waiver request by the applicant.
Is there a second? I'll second it.
Wait a minute, to approve the waiver?
Yes, the motion has to be in the affirmative.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and then you vote yes or no, and then that's how we determine the outcome.
We have a first and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? To waive this site plan, the engineered site plan? Any discussion? Hearing none. I'll take a roll call vote. Carol?
Um, no, I'd like to see more detail. Robert?
Opposed.
Ian?
No.
Michael?
Uh, Mike, no.
And Laura Schiffer is staying. So the. That mo, your request is denied. Okay, for an engineered site plan.
So what does that mean?
You have to get an engineered site plan. So, and then if. Your engineer sees this as well as the referrals. That came in. Because I believe we would be concerned with what the Board of Health has to say and the Building Inspector. So.
Hey Lori. Can I, I'm sorry. I, I know the fire chief didn't make any requests either, but I know that's kind of, it was residential, now it's going commercial. I'd like to see if, you know, really get a. A request from them and, and see what they, they might have to say.
Do that, that fire, to the fire department now that it's commercial, do they have another climate?
Yeah.
Anything else?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, this is Adam Costa. If I could just offer something that might be of some help. So I just want to be sure that we're, we're being very clear about. The terminology we use. So we were referring to an engineered site plan, but just for Ms. Thurber's benefit. The way that the bylaw reads is that. Plans submitted to the planning board for a site plan special permit, which is what we have. It says shall be prepared by a registered architect. Landscape architect. Professional land surveyor. Or a professional engineer. And then the next sentence goes on to describe what the site plan needs to show. So you do have some options. When we refer to an engineered site plan, it may be that you contact an engineering firm and they say, well. If you want our PE to prepare this plan, it's going to cost you twelve thousand dollars. If you want our land surveyor to get out there. And take a look and put a plan together, that'll cost you two thousand dollars. So you just have to have it prepared by one of these professionals because that's what the bylaw requires and the board opted not to waive it. Just, just to be very clear.
Okay, does that help? Thank you, Adam. I appreciate that clarification.
Ms., Ms. Verber. Some of these firms are multi-disciplinary. They do several topics. So I think we need a certified. Survey of the land in terms of dimensionally where the building is with, with the driveways according to the bylaw standards. Okay? And then. I. Need some professional look at. Any drainage issues here and how they'd be addressed. So. Landscape. Person would not be adequate in my mind to do what we need. So as a baseline, we need a surveyor. And then we. Need some analysis of. The drainage that's there, that a drainage could be there or if it's required. And. When you engage somebody, you want to make them aware of the topics that. Have been presented here tonight. And. To, you know, be sure that. All these, they're capable of handling the things that we need.
First.
Thank you.
So. You want topographical information on the site plan?
Um.
And drainage analysis on the site.
Well, excuse me.
It's one forty-five dash forty-two. Okay, page three, one forty-five dash forty-two, the whole upper paragraph, that paragraph is going to tell you. What needs to be done.
Okay.
And I'm sure if you're contacting anybody locally, they're going to know because they're used to working with us and with us. So.
I, I think it was a local engineer that charged me nine thousand dollars. And I kept calling around to. Engineers so I could, you know, get. Some plans for the building. Nobody even returns the call.
I don't think we can help you there, but I'm sorry to hear that. Maybe we can. Over with that. So we have had our vote and we've given you direction. And. When do you think it might be good for you to continue the hearing to?
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. May take a while to get this.
Yeah, once and once I know that September is not gonna work. October third.
I I wouldn't want to burden her with the deadline.
Yeah, but we have to continue to a certain date. We need to continue the hearing to a certain.
Well, then we'll have to continue again.
We may, that's correct. That has happened before.
All right.
You know, but we can.
Yeah.
If she does, then she doesn't have to wait as long. If if she's not ready, then we'll give her another date. You know, that's not, that's not an issue.
I see.
Just September is really bad. Um. There is a third, it means the. Oh, the third is fine. The third is and probably, I don't know, the seventeenth or the twenty-fourth. I'm good with any one of them. Actually, it might not be for the seventeen. Might do the third and the twenty-fourth. That's the first and the fourth. You know, but October is kind of weird. Anybody have issues in October?
Yeah, I just started meeting days for now. Second and fourth, first one, one, I think. I know we had the third. I'm just sorry, I don't have a second one right off.
Just gonna check on a date.
Okay. Meeting in October.
And then if I may, as an aside. Um while Beth is trying to get us her next date that we can give to Sally. We went over and voted on. The recommendation for the age restricted warrant article.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
And you were you were okay with it as drafted?
As it is.
Okay, so you just need to make that submittal. If the if the planning board is going to be the proponent of that article. Then you need to submit it to the select board for the select board to add to the special town meeting warrant. I. I don't even know that they uh their their dates for submittal have even opened yet, let alone closed, but. Um I think that at any time you could get that to the board through Eric Sligo and it'll it'll be uh it'll be included on the future warrant.
Okay, I mean, that'll do that. Um. Also, we'll have to have a public hearing on that as well. So we'll have to plan around that before. The special meeting.
Correct.
Twenty-fourth, okay.
And then November fourteenth will be the following.
And what, November fourteenth will be the one after that. Um. And then November fourteen. Okay, well, I'm good with one month at a time. So um. The third or the twenty-fourth of October, Sally, we're happy to continue to either one of those.
Yeah, um. I hope I can get an engineered site plan by then. That's the only thing that I don't know for sure.
And I'm happy to entertain the third for you at six forty-five. If for some reason you can't make that, you know that we're meeting two weeks later. And we can continue from the third to the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Okay, now I can um entertain a motion to. Continue this hearing, this public hearing until October third at six forty-five PM. So. The motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
One second, sorry. What, you're timing.
We have something else?
Oh, yeah, October third.
Yeah.
Yeah, there are two other hearings that night, so you would probably have to go at. I'd say seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
Yeah.
Seven forty-five.
Seven forty-five.
October third at seven forty-five. Have a first and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Carol Hofstens, yes.
Ian Ortiz, yes.
Mike Ross, still yes.
Laura Schiffer, yes. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Adam. Stay well.
You too. Thank you.
It was uh Carol, it was Michael and Carol.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's get back to, and I let Adam know that we voted the article. So you need to get that to. There. And then depending on when the meeting is, we have to have a public hearing. Worked at some point. So I wanted to get back to the edits. For. The one dash two oh two, one dash twenty twenty-one. Uh replacement of a policy that did not exist. So does everybody, anybody have any comments regarding um what I had done? The check marks at the left meant that I was fine with that particular paragraph where there's a comment would be in the third paragraph. Um. I'm not sure what call to order means. I don't know if anybody else knew, but if a member, if a board member is called to order while speaking. I've done parliamentary procedure for a long time. I do not know what that means. I should have kept Adam here, huh?
Yeah. I know.
I know point of order. I know when somebody is out of order. I just don't know call to order. Um call to order like you're. You're not acting appropriately and I call you to now be in order?
No.
I don't get it. I believe that's.
I think it means, okay, we gotta move to subject. Calls to order.
The board member shall cease speaking immediately until, oh.
The question of order is determined.
Yeah.
So.
It would only be determined by the chair.
Yes, right.
If ruled to be in order, the speaker shall be permitted to, I don't know, it's like. No, because if ruled to to order, if ruled to be in order. Which means you're out of order. I know out of order. I think you take a vote.
Right, but a call to order means, okay.
Yeah.
There's either a lot of pandemonium going on or we've spent enough time on the subject. Everybody pay attention and the chairman takes over.
Okay, um I'm I'm gonna ask for an explanation of that. Um and I believe that that form. At all times from all, I think it's supposed to be from. Does everyone agree that it's from?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, and then next paragraph is fine, and then the paragraph after that. Any staff member or employees desiring to address the board shall be recognized by the chair. Shall state name and address for the record and shall limit their remarks to the matter under discussion. I. Don't know, I mean, public hearings, I I don't know why you would state your name and address every time you had to speak in a meeting. That's why my question is, is it for any meeting or public hearings? And then since when have I have never heard you state your name and address? No.
No, but I've seen that when a non-member or citizen from the community.
Public hearing.
Right.
Or at um annual meeting or a special town meeting. Yeah, well, there I know, I know.
Right, so I don't know if this is being confused or what.
So, yeah, can you just like put that out there next to, I didn't see anything. Did anybody else see anything I didn't see? Okay, so then for any need, again, any public member desiring to address a board. Shall be recognized by the chair, so state name and address for the record.
That's true.
I understand public hearings. I do not understand. A regular meeting. Just if you could get clarification. They may just wanna, if if nothing else, well, I want to just hear this to uh.
I think the intent of that. Is to know who we're speaking to and whether they're so that whoever's being heard. Can be qualified in some way as to the legitimacy of what they have to say, right?
Um I understand. I'm I'm not getting, when we're in elected board, we're an elected board.
Right.
When we're in our board meetings and we have members of the public. Uh you, the only time I've ever heard an introduction of anything has been during a public hearing.
Right.
Where somebody would state their name. Now, she was the only one here tonight, but. Normally, if neighbor of butters and neighbors, which by the way, there had been no.
We haven't added it.
Well.
Not recently.
This is probably because of COVID and we're just coming out of COVID, you know, but um. I don't know, just.
Well, I think again, this is if you have a. A confrontational public hearing with a large crowd.
Yes, this bridge of quorum, I understand that, okay.
Wrote everything in.
But if you notice the heading, the heading on the first page, who it's addressed to. Who this is addressed to.
Yeah. And 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 you're thinking it should be public.
No, I'm thinking I expect this to be written this way for public hearings, not for regular meetings, but I now understand. I know, I know, I I know where it's coming from. Know where it's coming from.
You do.
Yeah, I do. It was the commission's hearing and it wasn't a hearing, it was just a meeting. Where it got very out of hand. So. Just on that, we have those questions and if that's if that's what it is, um then they probably only have to. Fix the word. The bottom. Before they have an etched policy. Okay. We went through that form. Where's my agenda? Yeah, of course I do. So many, this is my agenda, right? And this is this. Yeah. So. Done with that. We did the age restricted, just got the edits, discuss the review planning board fees. Okay, so now we're just missing you guys. Mike and. And Ian. Uh discuss a review planning board fees request town administrator, request of town administrator. Okay, and that, Carol, thank you for all your hard work on that and we will give you the floor.
Give me the floor.
You got the floor.
All right, so I went up to various.
You were not able to just send that to them, right?
Oh, right here.
Yeah.
Okay, that's.
Because we're working on it, right, yeah. Okay, so so what I did is.
I went up to various towns. I went up, I went to the Ludenburg.
Just just while you're Ian and Mike, while Carol is discussing this with us. Um Beth is going to go and we have hard copy here. But because you're not here, she's gonna go and scan it and email it to you so you'll know what we're talking about. Okay?
Okay, so what I did is I went up to the town of Ludenburg, Shirley. To even look at this Ashburn ham. Pepperell, Broughton, and Westford.
Oh my god.
Um to look at their um what they charge for fees. One of the issues I found is. Various towns um like Westford has updated their fees of twenty twelve.
Yeah.
Um I'm not sure when I was with Ludenburg was twenty eighteen. And I did um Shirley was the closest of twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Um but Ashburn ham was twenty eleven and I actually talked to the people to verify that these dates were accurate. And that I was getting the most current um fee schedule. So uh in Broughton and Pepperell were both from twenty sixteen. Um the other issue I was running into trying to do some kind of comparison is that. Some of the towns have very lengthy fees and they're not all called the same thing. Um some of the fees, I didn't even understand what they were. Um so I I found it pretty difficult. To try to like do a spreadsheet or something, which was my, which was my thought.
There's no apples for apples.
But I found looking through all of them, I found that the Pepperell one seemed to be the closest to. Um our fees. Um. But because. I know like the lady in Westford, I think, I think they were twenty twelve and she just laughed and she said, oh yeah, we haven't updated anything, she says. I wish we could, but.
Oh, um. Cause Ashburn ham is two thousand and six.
No, it's two thousand, it's right here. They were advised two thousand and one.
Oh, I see, I didn't look down.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's eleven.
So I wasn't sure when ours were last revised.
I don't know, maybe Beth will be able to tell us that.
So that's why, you know, I had great things.
Where's the one that's on? It must be in this packet though, because. I don't think it was in this.
Yeah, we did have, she gave us a copy at some point, three point four.
I remember seeing the email, but I didn't print it off.
Oh, okay. And I didn't make copies of it.
Oh, that's okay, but you have one? And, oh, and, and the one, well, wait a minute, is that the one that they sent us to review? As increases?
Oh, is that what this is? Oh, I thought this was the existing one, is this? Is this the proposed?
I thought that's what we got in the email.
No?
No, I thought that's what we got in the email was. Fees that they were proposing.
I thought it took us off our website.
And it was Mike Crowley.
Oh.
That.
Alright, so maybe I don't have the actual.
Do we have the current? Um.
Good work.
Um, pricing? Um.
Is it?
Schedule?
Is this?
Yeah.
Is that, is that? I thought I took this off.
When was it increased?
It wasn't, I, I knew.
Oh, it wasn't?
I don't know the date.
And Michael didn't send us proposed fees? Oh, we're gonna propose it.
We're looking at, yeah, at the board level.
Okay, now that we have that clarification. But I didn't, that's not in our packets.
Oh, what? Well, maybe I printed it off this website and I just didn't think of making copies of it, cause I.
So our fee? Our fee. Okay, fine.
I am, I guess I wasn't thinking that.
Yep. It's not here.
Anyways, because they're all, every town is somewhat different. I just had a hard time like trying to. Wrap my head around trying to compare apples to apples. And maybe I liked Pepperell because it was the easiest one to read.
Read and understand.
And understand, it was the easiest one of all, to read and understand.
Well, it's funny, uh, some of these, uh, when I look at the Groton one, uh, the Westfords. Well. They seem more, um. Oactive in terms of. How projects are described in the building code now. Um. In terms of particularly multi-family. Classifications. Um, so in those groups. Uh, the size of number of units has a big, uh. Uh, is delineated and classified. Um, so. Currently. Um. Anything under twenty-five units is considered a small development, for example. Um, and then there's a mid-sized development that would be. Um. Twenty-five to another racket, and then there'd be a huge development, so that. Instead of dealing with so many dollars per acre or lot or per unit, they do it in a bulk category, you know, um. So I don't know if that might be a format that we might wanna think about. I also think that, uh. An preliminary review.
Did you? Of thousands?
I've scanned what Carol, I mean, um, you know, I'm not able to print this.
Yeah.
I am trying to email. The answer.
I don't know, I think they're all high. I, I think they're all very high and, um. Just. In some instances. Cost prohibitive.
Some of them are very high, yes.
For development.
I'm sorry?
Cost prohibitive.
What?
For fees.
Some of the fees are very high in some of the towns, yeah, I found that. Even though some of them are old, old numbers, it's still pretty high.
Right, I, I think, uh, I agree. So I think what we need to do. Is sort out the types of fees that there should be. In other words, they're not consistent, they, they micromanage this so far that. Um, it's hard for anybody to.
I understand follow-up fees, additional fees. Should be nominal to pay for staff. Okay, so it takes this much time for staff to do. This review.
Right.
Um. And, and they come back and whatever, back and forth, back and forth, for fifty bucks, hundred bucks, I understand that, but these other fees that are like. Seven hundred, five hundred per thousand dollars. Except, when you're talking, um. You know, parking spaces and the fees are. Five hundred to. Plus twenty new parking spaces, seventy-five hundred for a maximum.
I know.
That's crazy.
Uh, yeah, I think a lot of it is discouraged development too, so, right, so. Um, here. In terms of. The types of clients I've had going through these things, I've had multi-family projects and single-family projects and little projects like Mrs. Silver, yeah. Um. I really think it's extremely important. Before some, let's say, for example, let's use her case, for example, if she had a free preliminary review before she purchased that property. That property. She would have more information. As to what she would need to do. To get to converting to, to this. So, a lot of towns right now, before you can even get. A planning board, a zoning board hearing. You have to submit a permit application, a building permit application to the building department to deny it, so they even get a hearing. I think that's totally unfair.
It's always been that way here, always.
It's in every town.
Always.
And I don't think that's appropriate, because I have clients that invest thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
To get. Co-compliant construction documents without even know they're gonna be granted the opportunity to build it.
Very discouraging, yeah.
And I, I don't, I think that's totally unfair, so I think there should be a free. Review hearing. And, so that the owner has some idea. Before he overinvests in something that may not be beneficial for him. So, is there something in our town that we can do now? To allow the building department to do that? A cursory review, which. Would not necessarily be. A vague review, but a general idea of what, how many units or, you know, how big a project it is, what the intent of the project is.
Right, let me just say this, right now, Mike, both Mike and Beth are very accommodating to the public.
I know that, yeah.
Very accommodating, so if they really want the info, I don't think that would happen here. With Ms. Thurber, she had already been through a process that she decided not to, and I think she was pretty good about the other process, right?
Yeah.
And what they put her through, but she had another property. And so when this one came up. She was gonna do whatever she wanted. Was my understanding, and then, and, and still, in this case. Beth was extremely helpful, um, the building inspector was extremely helpful, Mike Crowley was extremely helpful.
Has been accommodating.
And that's very time-consuming.
Yes.
Okay, that's our tax dollars paying for her to get all that information. And guidance, and people calling her back, cause she wasn't even calling them back. Building department and Mike.
Yeah, well, was that addressed like in a couple meetings ago?
Yeah, we've had, we've had the discussion before, and in fact, the building inspector came and spoke with us about this, and so. I think that, in, in this, in that particular case, she's probably gotten more help than anybody else has ever gotten.
Really?
Yes. Yes. And if you're gonna do that for one person, you have to do it for everyone.
I know, and that's the same thing with these site plans, I mean. We just can't, aren't married, they wave at them. You know?
Well, you think if she already had gone through that process with this, she'd know the second time.
Yeah, she just wasn't gonna do it.
Yeah, she said right here.
Been in business, she's a staple first.
She was gonna authorize eight, nine thousand dollars.
She openly said it, that she wasn't going to do it too, in this meeting.
Well, she's not gonna get her permit, but she's been doing business all along anyway. What, what's that? Is that our fee?
This here? Oh, it's just on the website, and it says, I'll read it. Townsend is committed to supporting its residents and developers and its access. Accessibility of information regarding application codes and regulations. To support this goal, land use staff are able to offer. Informal, pre-application, informal review at no additional cost, so we already have that.
Yeah, okay.
It's highly recommended that all African schedule a pre-application informal review. And how did you use that through the building department, yes?
Or Beth or Mike?
Oh, sure.
Land use.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm telling you, we're trying to be friendly, but these, these fees are not.
These are our current fees, yeah.
So this is the current one?
Yeah.
Um, I have a question, what is the first? Block of fees, who is that ours? Cause I see, I see Shirley's and I see Ashburn is the first.
Oh, um, Beth is gonna send it to you, you don't have it.
I'm gonna take you, yeah. No, I already received it, I'm talk, I, I already received it, I'm talking about, uh.
The Townsend?
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't know if this is Townsend, cause it doesn't have a name, it just says planning board. And administrative fees, but it doesn't say.
ZBA schedule of fees on top? Planning board, ZBA schedule of fees?
And then. And then underneath it says, went to the Townsend call?
No, it only says planning board schedule, planning board schedule, special of administrative fees.
But I wrote some of them.
I wonder if it's this.
Are you looking at the one that says planning board fee schedule, and then over to the right, it says Ludenburg ten three twenty eighteen? Or this one?
Oh, that says Ludenburg, okay, okay.
That's probably my favorite chip. That said Ludenburg.
I saw, I saw that and I was like, yo, I don't know what is that?
Okay, no, that's Ludenburg.
But it was, it was sideways, so it's not your, it's not your fault, it, it was sideways when it was.
I, I, I'm sorry, but the scan, yeah.
That's okay, it, it, some of them I had to write the town on because it didn't print out with the town.
And, and I just sent, um, the link to the webpage for Townsend. Planning board and zoning board of review.
Perhaps it might be smart just to. Go over our schedule now and update it.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than try to reinvent the wheel and everybody knows what we're talking about with our schedule, right?
Yeah. Well, let's take a, uh, or you're saying it's called different things?
Well, so it's, in some places, some of them have the same name, so there are places where we could actually look at. Um.
Well, they have other.
I, I saw the special permits from us is. Almost a hundred and, no, a hundred and fifty dollars more expensive than. Hmm, than Ludenburg's and, uh, Ashburn, is this? Yeah. I need to print it, uh, print it so I can circle it out.
When it has the per peer consultant fee of twenty-five hundred, and it has the peer consultant fee of ten thousand in a subdivision. That is what goes like into a bank. And a separate account for that building, but that does not mean that that's. Gonna necessarily be spent. Right?
Correct.
Right.
Depends on the theory of engineering and the cost.
Right, that's like a, a fund, right?
Yeah.
So, certain projects will require a certain amount, and those might require a lot more.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I think in other communities, don't they just? Transfer that expense or direct expense to the applicant?
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah, and then they can get, yes, and they can get, if we don't spend it all, they get it back.
Correct.
Right, so if it's eight thousand instead of ten thousand, they get it back, okay. Um. I mean, some of the fees. Maybe could be adjusted upward because. You know, you can't get anything for seven.
Yeah, I mean, just the overhead costs. From the town.
You know, under the, uh, site plan review, when it goes seating road act, what, what do you do, what is, what is that? What is that?
Alright, so, I'm sorry, question again?
Uh, under the site plan review, this is for us, and it says seating road act. What is it that you do with the seating road act? You go out and look at stone walls, is that what that is?
Yeah, that's, um, and when they put in a new driveway, um, and they do a driveway entrance, and if they need to move the stones. Um, or if, if we need to take down trees, so it's an application, you know, that basically gets processed, it's, it's fairly simple. Sometimes a hearing is with the tree warden combined with the planning board, um, but, you know. I think that is a fair price, um.
Yeah, I would say.
You know.
Yeah, I think that's a fair price.
Which one were you talking about?
Scenic road act, this one, right here.
Oh, scenic road act.
I'm not sure what that is.
Yeah, what, I don't know what that is, what is it?
Well, every road in Townsend is a scenic, a scenic road.
Anytime you, um.
To me means that if every road is a scenic road, none of the roads are scenic roads.
If you all fit stone wall.
How come we're not getting all this tourist revenue? So, this fee is for what, what is that?
Okay, yeah, in the public way, if you're going to, uh, perhaps make a driveway entrance and you need to cut down a tree or alter a stone wall. You'd have to apply for a, um, a scenic road permit, scenic, scenic road.
So it would be like that, um, up and off end road, you know, putting in a new house and you had it like the stone walls, you moved up the drive, I remember that.
Yeah, question.
Could I ask you a question?
An old city road too, we just did that one, do you remember that one? Old City Road?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Old City Road, he was putting in a driveway. And, um, was removing stone wall to create the driveway.
Right, I remember that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so let me ask you a question. Down on Route nineteen, right where they, they built the bike trail. We want to get all those trees on the street line. Was there any review on that or any?
Oh, they took down a whole forest along one nineteen.
Oh, I already heard about that.
You know, they, they came and.
And the same thing happened on South Tupper Road or something.
One nineteen is a state highway, but I've not seen a road.
Well, no, this was beyond the limits of the highway.
Well, that whole area that, where the bike thing is where they just came and took down all the trees, you had one, it's a rail trail?
Yeah, the rail trail is, right now it's a big field, it's open field, they had a rail trail near the river. That was all tree-lined wall. That went back thirty feet anyway. And how did that all get?
No idea.
Got cleared and leveled and?
I have no idea. I don't know what the future plans are for that. Because certainly. I, first of all, I don't know who owns it. I don't know if it's town-owned or state-owned or whatever, but. I mean, it certainly would have made a great space for the food trucks.
The scenic road. It's not.
The one nineteen and thirteen on scenic roads.
Okay, let's talk about these fees.
Wait, that's not right.
So, alright, so we think we're good with the.
Okay. So. The filing fee, right? It costs us, does it cost us to post these legal notices and newspapers and stuff, yes?
Yeah. And they pay.
Right, so the secretary.
The applicant pays.
Right, I know, but what the, is the fee appropriate, is the question?
Which one is it?
Twenty one. Which one you were using?
I tried reading at the beginning there.
We, oh, for the mailing and the legal notices, the three hundred dollars, it could be. Cause. We go up to a butter's, right, you gotta notify all the butter, and there could be several of them.
So, my question is, where do we cover the initial review? That. You're doing as we did here. Cause there's no fee.
There's no fee.
There's no fee for that, we're giving that service fee and. You're assisting them in what they may need and what they have to do, and discussing their alternatives with them, so. Uh, somebody comes in and wants to know about a project, you spend all this time with her, you and Mike spend time with them. And give them insight and direction, and guidance as how to proceed. So where? Do we in this fee schedule? Have a provision to cover that expense? Because when they're doing that, they're being. Um, distracted from other tasks that they have to do, and at some point, they're probably need more staffing. Is there anywhere here that we can see that would happen?
Well, are are we comfortable with that at the moment? I didn't have a chance to do a comparison.
I don't, I don't know that they have a line for mandatory free.
No.
You know, I think that's something that was added here.
So. So those expenses are. Indirectly accounted for, and some of these other line items is, I guess.
Yeah.
So wouldn't you expect that, like, come out of? Some kind of a consulting fund?
Yeah.
I'm not trying to be obstructive there as a striker.
Why are we charging double for kind of open space multi-family development, which cannot be big in this town anyway? Than we do for a open space preservation development? We have to think about this, so when, when you approve open space. That ba- basically becomes no tax revenue. Right? So. I think that should be higher. And I think the other one should be lower. Cause that's never gonna be this, which is, which would create revenue to the town. Is not gonna happen in a, in a humongous. Impact on the town because we can't have a lot of development. Unless that overlay district becomes, which would also be tax revenue. Right. Okay, and students and all that other stuff, so I'm, I'm all for the.
Reversing it.
Reversing it.
Reversing which one?
The open space preservation.
Put the multifamily down to six hundred, yeah, which makes sense.
If, if you end up with multifamilies, you're gonna get your money back, if you end up with open space.
You just end up with open space.
You just end up with open space, well, does this mean, I don't understand. Open space preservation development.
But it says it.
What are you developing?
But if the. If the flight swing will clean, it will need a bit of, a bit of subdivision, so does that mean if you do a subdivision? And you put so much open space? Because say, yeah, like I think in Wester, they did a development where they. Because they gave up. So much space that would become recreational space.
Right, so that really is. Uh, an added fee to a base fee, is that correct? Okay, so that probably should stay the way it is.
Okay.
What I have an issue with is. On the last page, you have special permit for multifamily housing. I think that has to be. Qualified a little more because a three family unit is considered multifamily, and that would burden that. Applicant with.
Why, why?
A five thousand dollar base fee.
Why is that application so high when it's probably the same amount of? Work? Then, I mean, I understand the one thirty five per unit, if they have to.
That's okay.
Something more, but. There hasn't been any construction. Has there been any construction since you've been here?
This, this should be a grant year, it's scheduled, based on the size of the project. So, if somebody's only doing three or four units. To pay five thousand upfront is pretty doggy.
What's comprehensive permit units cost per unit?
That's a state permit uh for the ZBAs, that's a forty fee. A state permit.
Right.
Where does it say that?
Well, that's pretty much, that's pretty much what the state office, the now, right? Isn't that ironic, it's the same number?
I think these are combined, they they kind of, ZBA got combined with planning board, is what I think happened. I think ZBA is the SDGA for um, the multifamily, isn't it? Special permit for multifamily housing. I think it is.
Is ZBA?
Yeah.
Okay, so, a comprehensive permit is the, these special programs for affordable housing and low income housing.
It does say planning board, ZBA schedule, but it doesn't.
Right.
It doesn't delineate or identify.
So if we look at the special permit multifamily above that. You see how they've broken it down to the unit sizes, the number of units? I think the special permit. Uh, family housing should be delineated the same way. With a base permit fee. And then so much per unit. So that. Um, in other words. This special permit here would discourage. Small. Units, small cornered units, in other words. If somebody had a certain amount of acreage, then they would be allowed to put six units on it, or five units on it. The five thousand dollar upfront fee is the same as somebody that has a larger. Acreage, that can get so many more units out of it. Are you, you saw, you see the dilemma there, so if you look at it from that perspective, it's. It's uh discourages small unit development.
So, what is, this is because I don't really know, so the special permit for multifamily housing, how was, what is different with the comprehensive permit? Well, that's a good question, they're both on. Yeah, you you don't have to worry about those, because those are zoning board of appeals. Oh, yeah, like, there's a heading there that says zoning board of appeals, variance, appeal of the building inspector. That's all ZBA.
Oh, okay. This sheet is all ZBA.
Right under where it says.
Oh, alright, right there.
So everything above that section.
So we only need one, the one, the two page, okay, so I can get rid of this section, you don't have to look at this. No, I'm making up this.
Okay.
That you just gave me.
Right, and there's ZBA is, there's that heading, what says. Zoning board of appeals is right above. The word variance. So that's. That's a ZBA permit. Application.
Oh.
Here, there you go. So anything above that.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, I see. Yeah. Oh, okay, so it's only, okay, so.
So ZBA is going over these fees.
So where are we going?
The little one here, down here, to, to there.
I'm sorry.
The first page.
Yes.
And then, well, I double, all the way down to, so, so we must have a second page.
Yeah, so we're.
Alright.
So it's the same. Okay. Alright, well, that's easier.
So then one, on this ground mounted solar, whatever, installation fee. Three hundred dollars, what does that mean? Installation. Application filing fee, oh, you're gonna install it. You, in order to get. Application fee, public hearing, also responsible for cost of mailing.
Yeah, I think that's poorly done here, I think that it's the cost of the application for.
It's, it's not the installation fee.
No, that sounds like a, something that's.
That shouldn't even be there, that.
Yeah, I I agree with you, that's a building department line item, right? So you just say, uh, get rid of the installation fee and just leave it as the application filing. Yeah, the application fee.
And so what are the requirements there? Uh, what are the planning board requirements for?
That one.
That's for the public hearing.
That's site plan, that's a site plan, right there. And on the um. And on the actual application, it says site plan review special permit, or non-discretionary site plan review, which would be solar. The cost for new construction should be one thousand two hundred dollars, so if you're gonna put in a newer ray, like a one megawatt array. You should be paying one thousand two hundred dollars for that.
Well, I I I'd like to get a better understanding of this.
Yeah.
I see solar farms. And then I see individual property owners.
Yeah.
So, does this fee apply to both?
No, the individual properties, that all goes through the building department. That's not planning board, so they have a separate, you know.
So, what we're doing is charging these lower fee. For some kind of corporate entity, right?
No, actually, the fee that they, that is not fracked, I don't know why, but as of this point, um, if I look at the actual application. For the planning board, it says, it has the fees listed on our application. And it differs from what's written on that form, it it says site plan review. Or non-discretionary site plan review for solar slash wind energy installation. Would cost um, one thousand two hundred dollars for a new construction application. And then, I don't know why they have existing construction, but. So for solar and wind, it it says one thousand two hundred dollars for a new.
So it always should be on here.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So something's wrong, something's wrong here.
Yeah, I agree.
Something's very wrong here.
I think a building department fee, I I would think, that three hundred dollar fee.
So those fees.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we need to change.
And you said the wind.
It should be um, one thousand two hundred.
No, but you said it was called solar and wind.
Solar and wind energy installation.
So.
Yeah, so it's a ground mounted.
Well, the communication towers go in the same category, don't they, I mean, there's similar kind of. Key requirements, I mean, uh.
And what did it say on, on that fee schedule?
Three hundred dollars.
No, but it just calls it ground mounted, so.
No, I'm talking about telecommunications.
On the application, it says telecommunication, communication cell tower, is seven fifty for new construction. And three hundred for renewal of a cell tower special permit. Seven fifty seems a little bit light for a brand new tower. Considering all the approvals.
Well, and how much money they're making off of it, and for the privilege of interrupting our skyline or whatever. I mean, what does the town get out of that, I mean?
That seems small, but I don't know how much, how many new towers are actually coming, you know, going to.
Well, no, but. But we're still gonna be repairing them and maintaining them and whatever, so.
Yeah, so, I agree.
And they may replace them with something more.
We do.
You know.
I don't think we maintain them.
No.
No.
No, we don't maintain them, but I'm, the person that has the tower. So, and then technology changes, so they may be making the towers higher, or doing things with them, or making them look like Christmas trees.
That's the tree towers.
So what do you think, seventeen fifty? For the new construction?
Yeah.
I mean, the renewal of the permit, it would just be um, three fifty?
Yeah.
Yeah. So those permits expire and they're just renewed, there's no modification, so that's okay.
Well, here, you can um, potentially up that to five hundred.
This one says, this is, where it was written, why was a wind turbine project? Five hundred dollars plus ten dollars per linear foot height.
That's pretty cool.
I like that idea, yeah.
That's a pretty good idea, that would take in considering.
To that would take account for the height.
So what was the ratio per foot?
It's ten dollars per linear foot height. And then.
Five hundred foot tower, right?
Yeah.
That would be five thousand dollars? No.
No, ten dollars. I bet at math.
Fifty thousand.
No.
No.
A five hundred foot tower, a ten.
Yeah.
Fifty thousand dollars.
No, five, no, five thousand dollars.
Oh.
Yeah, so there you go.
So here.
Thousand dollars is reasonable.
True.
Yeah. So, and for a life scale ground mounted solar project, it's five hundred dollars plus. One hundred dollars per megawatt.
We have one megawatt array here, that's not that much.
That's up there, oh, okay.
That's not a way.
Is that all that is?
Yeah.
Okay, so yeah, that's not very much, is it? But I like the.
Well, okay, let's, let's talk about. Let's talk about the reality of that situation, okay? Somebody's got ten acres of land. And they wanna put a solar. Bomb, yeah, with solar collectors on the ground. So how do you determine? What the value of that is to the person putting it on the ground? And what alternative revenues that resources could have generated for the town?
How many acres was the West Meadow Road one?
Uh, 37 acres of the actual array. And just 30 minutes. You see, there was 3 acres.
3 acres, that's really all you see. Is that operational?
Yeah.
Is that operating?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been operating a couple of years now, yeah.
I don't know what. No, I don't. I don't know what they're assessed for.
I don't know, but they're saying, I believe. So that wasn't even a word. So there was an agreement that was made with the.
Should it be based on? The number of solar units rather than megawatts or whatever, I mean.
I have no idea and. I don't know if there isn't a restriction. On what you can even assess them because they're government backed. Our tax dollars were given to those companies to build solar.
We were we're all building little electrical plants for the government. I know.
And then the unitile customers are paying for them.
Yeah, I know.
Cause they're not, if they're not on solar, if they're not on solar, you're paying them.
Yep.
No, I I agree. It's totally a political thing.
Yeah, so I don't I don't.
Yeah.
What, how can we make this look better and what is within our control here tonight and? What do we feel comfortable with raising within the planning board's authority here?
I think, you know, they'll look at the better town they're doing, um, and see where we can be.
For the last.
Well, I don't even know if we have to be similar because. Like, Westford right now has a ton of construction, a ton.
Yeah.
Chelmsford, they're all building. Tell me where you seek new construction in Townsend.
There's a significant amount though, but it's mostly residential and residential.
Some point, some point right there.
I I I see it in uh.
Townsend?
Yes. Um, and it a good part of it is um. More than single family, yeah.
Where?
Um, where you would.
I mean, I'm not, I guess. Uh, I'm just not very active in town.
Well, first of all. Uh, what West.
Well, Chelmsford, you have to figure it out soon. And they they build on every single piece of land.
Somebody told me that what was going on in Westford was was not public storage.
It's not, no, it's not in public storage. I have a sense.
How can they, how can they?
County houses, like, I mean. All of a sudden, I mean, I I drove by one, what did that happen?
Yeah, it's gone.
Houses like crazy. And they're wicked expensive, wicked expensive.
And I bet they're all sold.
Yes, they are. And they're all like over 7,800,000 dollars. If I if I still had my house in Westford that I built, it would be worth close to a million dollars.
Well, I'm afraid. If we're not on top of some of these fees schedules, we're gonna experience the same stuff.
Well, I I don't want to be Chelmsford because Chelmsford builds on every sort of.
No, no, and we can't do. We don't have public storage. We can't do. And sewage, if we were gonna have a huge development and have a sewage treatment plant. They're big money to put in, you're big money when they fail.
Well, so that multi family housing, you've got spray pro systems and everything else, so. You've got to supply the water for these buildings and um.
Common driveway application. 200. But but some of these fees, and this says under planning board. Uh, do we do we get applications for common driveways? From planning board? So. But that's under their planning board, Pepperell's planning board, common driveway fees.
Okay.
Um.
That goes to the highway.
$1,500 and 300 per lot.
Under which category?
Planning board.
Under, this is under Pepperell.
Common driveway. I know. Is there a way that for our next meeting, we could get? A list of. What fees have been collected and for what?
Mm hmm.
Over. A period of time.
Mm hmm.
And I don't even know that the last. Three years because of COVID is gonna work because I don't think the last three years are typical of anything.
But.
Um, sure.
Five years?
Yeah, the last five years.
Um.
They give you enough time to see like two years before COVID and then. You got three years of after or recovery.
Okay.
Well, there how. Some of this stuff is gonna be really challenging to do, but. Maybe we have to come up with a a kind of a formula. For that applies to everyone in these sections. So in the town operating budget right now. We have a certain expenditure that's related to. Uh, conservation, planning boards, zoning and all the appropriate um.
Is conservation have fees as well?
Right. And say, okay, uh, that's a basic overhead the town has regardless. So whatever the planning board is owning boy does. Okay, so we can look at that overhead and say, all right, 20% of that overhead. Should be recovered in every one of these categories. So if we looked at so much per unit. There'd be a 20% factor in just that one line item.
Mm hmm.
And at least we'll feel comfortable that we're covering our overhead. And then then we can refine it for the other other things, but I think. That kind of formula makes this a lot simpler and easier. So the basic thing is, one, is the town being reimbursed for its actual cost, okay? So that formula would sort of guarantee that that overhead would be there, whether there's 10 applications a year or one a year. Okay, so I think this should be a generic baseline. Percentage that applies to all these categories we're gonna look at.
That planning has to look at.
Mm hmm.
Right.
Just, just us.
Yeah, that's what I meant.
And. And then.
Is that a good approach, so?
Well, I I understand being able to cover the overhead. But the fees should cover the overhead.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it's. The whole town that's paying.
To help them.
To help them.
Right.
Yeah. So and that's not, that's not the purpose.
Mm hmm.
Um. So do you think that's something that you could put together and then?
I mean, I'm sure if she could provide the information, we would have.
Well, how many categories do we have here? Um.
Oh, it's all, yeah, the accountant would know it all.
One, two, three, four.
Nine to 10 for different revenues.
Five, six, seven.
Sure. Would they have the ones that only applied under? Cause we're only asked for our opinion of setting planning board fees.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
And that's only site plan.
Right.
Review fees.
And substitution and modifications for substitution.
Okay, so do you think that's a good idea that we find out what has come in, what we charge them simply? Okay, and then did it cover?
Well, how much of the overhead and did it cover, right?
And if we made too much money, then we shouldn't be charging that because we should be. Kinder to the applicants. We should be helpful to them. We're not looking to make a ton of money, but we are looking to break even.
Right, this is in a business. It's not a profit business.
Right. We're here to give a service to those who wanna help develop in town.
I agree.
Do you think that makes the homework on that already?
Did he share it?
Oh, I haven't. I think it's best for the seventh meeting because we might have looked back at the year and.
Okay. Um, cause really, I mean, it's 10 and 9. I feel like I'm not much more views. My next meeting, um. So everything else on the agenda. If we could. And our next meeting is October 3rd and we have two public hearings and I think it's maybe called. Oh, September 2nd. The 26th. Do we, we don't have any public hearings?
Correct, yeah.
Oh, good. So the next meeting will be like. Our work session.
Mm hmm.
And I actually come back that morning. But that'll be our work session then.
Okay, we'll do the fees and.
We'll do the fees, we'll do we'll do more work on the 175. We'll go over whatever. Was there anything pressing in the notices that we should know from the other towns?
Well, and the MVP update from Mike is an email that you all can read at your own.
Right.
By your own time, yeah.
Um.
That's these two things from Mike, so.
Can I just another topic here?
If you must.
I won't.
Uh, can 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 I be quick so we can sure?
Yes, it is. I just wanted your approval or the understanding of what I. Right now. Remember the subject of this overlay district is coming up. It's been coming up as a topic.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and I understand we're gonna have a. Uh, change in the zoning bylaw for that overlay district.
Right.
So I wanted to. Uh, present some stuff. For the board to view and because I would think an overlay district would have its own zoning requirements. Um.
I believe it does. This. I I think I've heard the presentation at least twice already and um, yeah, I know I have. In planning and from Mike and in housing.
Right.
Um, and. It's definitely gonna be beneficial to the town for us to pass that warrant.
I know that. I'm I'm not opposed to it. I'm not opposed to any of it. I just that want to put some. Guidelines in that that will be beneficial to the community. That I think I want the board to understand and consider. And so if that can be, if could be incorporated. In some of the requirements or some of the, it's not necessarily requirements, but a checklist of things. To determine how how appropriate the project is for what the town is looking for. Does that make sense?
Yeah, if you have additional information.
Yeah, I do. And I I I just wanna throw it out there so people can see other perspectives of things and. Bring them right into the whole thing much more in tune.
Okay, there's gonna be a public hearing for that. Before the meeting, yeah, before the meeting, the special meeting.
The town meeting?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, but you you want to share information with the board is what he's asking, right?
I I've already started preparing sort of an outline of stuff.
Yeah, but the public hearing.
And so what I wanted to do is have everybody look at it. Comment on what my comments are. Um, and then try to get everybody on the same page. So that we can say, this is gonna be a priority to us and and, you know, maybe make some kind of a scorecard. So we can, when a project comes in, um, did you know what I mean, that we can have something to base on? And it's not just how much real estate is being developed and how many units are there. It's about the life of the occupants and how they integrate with. The new occupants integrate with the people that already live here and and a lot of social elements as well. Um, and it's really interesting stuff. And again. Um, not that I'm mandating any of it. I think that we should see that and. And it's based on a lot of research. Uh, where we have high density housing and um, and how to make that more amenable. So most developers look at a project as putting people in a box and. Um, and it doesn't matter what type of project it is. Uh, even, you know, even gated communities can be boxes where people have no interaction with one another. And it's called, it affects the mental health of people and there's a lot of peripheral things that happen. In these communities that we're trying to talk about the well being of the occupant.
I I mean, I understand what you're saying. I'm not sure how that's gonna come under plannings. Um.
Well, I don't know.
Like review.
Right, well, I think.
Telling people how to live.
No, I don't thi- I think you're missing the point. I think we're. No, let me let me just present it to you, then you can have a better understanding what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when you present this to us, how much time are you going to need?
No, I I just wanna send you.
Oh, information, sure.
Yeah, I'll I'll send it to Beth or through you, Laura.
Through Beth.
And say, these are some of the things they might wanna think about. When we talk about these overlay districts and how and so people can see how these things interact and. Um, impact other things and um.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Oh, thank you for doing all that research.
Yeah, thanks for doing a great job.
I'm retired.
Thank you all for being here and entertaining a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion for adjourn.
And I'm not sure.
Uh, it looks like 9 o'clock.
Eight 59.
Eight 59, okay. Is there a second?
I say.
We'll call vote, please.
Yeah, yes.
There are all the shit.
Arbitrator in here.
Laura Schifrin, yes. Thank you all very much.